Okay, so just a reminder to everybody, as you just heard, this meeting is being recorded. We'll be posted on the town website and on the town's YouTube channel. Ask it, folks, please turn their cameras off if they are not contributing to the discussion. Makes for a better recording that way. There you have the ability to send me messages in the chat if you'd like. Typically, the work sessions are structured so that the council is deliberating amongst themselves primarily. But feel free to send me a chat. If this meeting gets interrupted, we'll 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 cut it off and I'll send out a new link townwide so we can rejoin. And I believe we have about an hour scheduled today, and this is just to cover and have a more substantive discussion of the earlier conversation about code amendments that were introduced at the previous council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I've just. I don't see Councilmember Kumar. So I just texted him.
Okay.
Because I mean, this meeting basically was convened at his request. So.
Well, we can still proceed.
I'm turning it over to I'm turning it over to the council because this is your meeting. Mr. President.
Hello, everyone. So thanks for carving out time in the middle of the day. I think this is perhaps a little more focused than or the scope is a little bit narrower than what the town manager mentioned in terms of an opportunity for us to discuss some of the proposed code changes. My understanding is we're just looking at the building code changes. We're not looking at like any of the election code changes. And and we have those three buckets that we were considering and which we agree to put. We we agree to to add to the agenda for next month. They were all introduced. We'll be able to vote on them, but we'll be able to make amendments or changes. And that's what we're here to talk about is just to see if there are some changes that resonate with the majority of us. The first, there are three amendments, the 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 second amendment, I don't think there was any any particular issue or much discussion on. So I think we can probably skip past that today, but I'm happy to talk about it, folks want. It's the first and the third amendments, I think. As I recall, had more discussion at the council meeting. So I want to talk about the first one, and in particular, the discussion, as I recall, or part of the discussion really talked about the paragraph 112-13 sub paragraphs E and F. And in our current code, as reminded for folks and for anybody listening, for the building requirements, the current code states subparaphy a criteria is whether the proposed work unduly and adversely affects the health and safety of adjoining or confronting property owners and residents for the enjoyment of their property. And subparagraph F states whether the proposed work otherwise unduly adversely affects the public health, safety and general welfare of the town or its property. We asked the town attorney to investigate what other neighboring jurisdictions have, and they had no particular language that talks about this, so. He deleted, he recommended deleting subparagraph E, which we clarified in the draft material, Rita had material, subparagraph F. But he clarified it's subparaphy, and I noted, he actually sent out an email prior to the meeting, I just missed it prior to the meeting. But the discussion, and I'm just trying to remove this long, but I'll turn it over in just a second. The discussion focused on the importance of talking about or capturing the spirit of enjoyment of property, but the difficulties of actually using that as a metric for or a criteria for approval of permits. There's also a desire to, because provide particular weight or recognition to the directly affected property owners, the ones, the neighbors of the building permits. And although Kabir is not here, he sent me an email, maybe he sent a similar email to other folks that I thought had a good proposed replacement language. So instead of just deleting one of those sub paragraphs and leaving the other, he proposes the new language, whether the proposed work adversely affects the public. So that's that's the intro. Let's go around and see what what comments folks have on this language or this this particular code bucket. Robin?
Actually, I'd like Ron Bull to comment first because I thought it could be a problem legally with that language.
Was Ron available?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. So I'm just pulling up that sentence again. See, I don't know if everybody heard it. There was some some interference on the line. So the the proposal was that it state whether the proposed work adversely affects the public health and safety of adjoining or confronting property owners and residents, the town or its property. Generally, I think that is a good replacement, but I do worry a bit about whether we clear up all the confusion as to what can and can't be considered. You know, residents may still think that that language embodies enjoyment issues that that can be addressed because, you know, certainly health includes mental health, for example. So I would I would still think that the the best way to do it would be to replace the enjoyment clause with adoption of substantive criteria specifically aimed at enjoyment.
But we don't have all that substantive language in yet. So I guess one question I also wanted to ask you and the other council members is, should we just leave ENF as is until we have substantive language in the code? You know, to you, Robin?
My problem is that I don't think we're ever going to achieve a perfect code. So there will be a time in which we would abandon ENF because we'll never achieve that perfect code. The the, at the moment, you know, we're we're tangling with stormwater. We previously altered code to do with extensions to the house, you know, porches and bay windows and all that good stuff. And we've improved it and are improving it, and I think height is our next frontier on that. But it's still, you know, we're not there, and I don't know when we're going to get there. And beyond height, there's green building codes, which, you know, we want to think about. So as I said, it's 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 a never ending process, amending the code. And so I think we would have to accept that we are limited, first of all, to health and safety, and so we can't can't use enjoyment. That's that's partly comes down through our police car, which Ron Bull has talked about, which I learned about also yesterday at the M L meeting. And no other municipality is using enjoyment, in fact. Secondly, and this is something I do want to clarify with Ron Bull, you cited in one of your emails, a legal opinion that we can't differentially give weight to some neighbors over all residents. Would you clarify that for me?
Sure. So the under Maryland case law, there's generally a requirement to provide due process and equal protection under the law. Code provisions should generally be applied uniformly. And so I would be concerned about a situation where, you know, if there's subjective criteria in the permitting requirements that would allow, for example, you know, one applicant to install a pink front door because a neighbor didn't complain, whereas a second applicant applying for the same pink door would be denied an application because a neighbor did complain there. And my reading of the case law is that that sort of statutory framework that can result in different results, you know, based on
who the neighbors are.
Right, is is problematic and could be in violation of due process and equal protection under the law.
And so the best solution for that is not to have a differential advantage for neighbors?
Right, and not to have criteria that sets up the council in the position of reviewing things subjectively rather than objectively based on substantive criteria. So, you know, instead of a provision that requires you to consider the neighbor's enjoyment, a provision that requires you to to basically just determine whether or not the application complies with the black letter of the law, height must be no more than X. Setbacks can't be any smaller than Y, you know, so on and so forth.
But I mean, if we're going to do that and say that everything has to, you know, be this black and white and, you know, then why would we have our own town permitting? I mean, why wouldn't we just follow Montgomery County? I mean, I think that the reason why we have our own towns permitting is because we, you know, have different priorities than just the standard X, Y, Z from Montgomery County.
Well, state law does say that we can adopt regulations that are stricter than the counties with respect to the X, Y, Z. Within, you know, as a certain universe of regulations, that those that universe is enumerated in the state law. And we can address setbacks, lot coverage, height, mass, design.
So, you know, maybe we're not then. I mean, I look, I don't want to go like around and around, like just trying to figure this out, like maybe we then change our setbacks and we, you know, do something where we talked about of like how much of your lot can be impermeable versus, you know, like maybe we do other things that will then allow not this mass and scale to be put on to these plots of land. And so that then we can, you know, maybe take out the quote enjoyment clause or whatever it might be. I mean, I think that people don't enjoy it when they take down, you know, nice trees and build to the exact, you know, specifications of the setbacks and, you know, make these houses as big as possible on these little plots of land and then incorporate a patio, which doesn't count, and a driveway and a this and a that. I mean, you know, so maybe we go, we do it through the a different way and we set stricter things up front.
And if I could just respond very quickly, that's exactly, in my opinion, what the state law affords. When my mentor, Dave Podolsky, on behalf of town of Chevy Chase, went to the legislature in 2006 to address mansionization, that's the argument he made, and the legislature was persuaded because Montgomery County regulations are generally one size fits all in residential zones. And, you know, towns wanted additional authority do something more than the county to protect their character.
So then maybe in the short term, like, you know, we leave the language in and then we go back and look and see if there's other things that we we should be doing. I mean, right now, we've got at least two to three, you know, potential housing things looming that, you know, are for sale or have are under contract or, you know, are owned by Paramount right now. So, you know, this is going to continue to happen in this town. And so, you know, and maybe we, maybe we look to change it starting now.
Yeah, I think great observation, Shannon. Debbie, do you have some further comments, questions?
Yeah, unmute. Okay, there I am. Sorry. I agree with what Shannon just said. I think it's time to go to be clear, to go after the size and massing of these houses. Um, I I don't, I think we should lay out what's important to us, height, mass, pink doors. I don't know. You know, whatever, whatever we think makes sense for this town. It's time, it's time to stop dancing around these issues. You know, I too looked at the house on Surrey that Paramount has a size, a sign in front. And I'm sure they're going to come to us with a million variances. And I think we should take our stand. No, you know, build a house that fits the lot. Maybe that's what we have to clearly say. Build your houses that fit the lot, that contain the water, that do all the things that make sense to us and no pink doors. That's all. There I am.
Thank you, Debbie. It's actually, I suspect that it's.
Can I just, can I just throw in something else? Just to put on the table, you know that there have been suggestions over the years to turn the whole town into a historic district? Because the southern part of the town is typical example of mid-century development. So can the town attorney address how that would affect the things that the council is talking about today?
Mr. Mayor, the question is if the town were to gain historic preservation status townwide, how that would impact the building permit process?
Correct, because couldn't you achieve what people are talking about right now with that?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I the the historic preservation process requires an applicant to submit proposals to the HPC for approval before getting a permit from the county or the municipality. And the HPC will review whether the proposed construction preserves the historic nature of the property. So if you want to put on an addition, you know, the HPC will take a look at the addition and make sure it's consistent with the architecture, etc. Question of how that would impact teardowns is one I I can't answer, Mr. Mayor. I might have to look at that because I, you know, off the head, I would say it would make it very difficult for someone to do a teardown and rebuild.
I mean, I think that, you know, based on like the the years that these houses were built originally, you know, I mean, personally, I I think people should be able to do some things that they want to do with their houses because, like, lives have changed and, you know, trends have changed and things like that. Like, you know, I I wouldn't necessarily want to say no one in the in this neighborhood can do nothing with their house unless it goes, you know, through something like that. But I do think that there's room to set higher standards to what they can do. And I don't know, um, Attorney Bolt, Mr. Bolt, um, what? Like, what does Chevy Chase Village do? Like, they're not really, you know, they've got strict rules, from my understanding, on how they let residents do that. What what kind of things that they do they offer that we don't have in ours?
Yeah, so in 2006, after the additional authority was granted by the state, the town of Chevy Chase and Chevy Chase Village were the first two to take advantage of that new authority and adopt comprehensive regulations. You know, the town of Chevy Chase has something rather unique called floor area ratio, which helps limit the mass of the structure, because your floor area has to be a specific ratio to the lot area. They both Chevy Chase Village and the town of Chevy Chase both have wall plane length and wall plane height or similar requirements, which an architect in Chevy Chase Village described as sculpting tools. So you can impose these sculpting tools to limit the visual mass and scale. So you say, for example, a wall plane can only be so tall or only so wide without some sort of interruption to break up the visual mass. After those two towns, you know, Martin's additions did a similar framework and.
And let me just add some historic perspective. First of all, the town of Chevy Chase Village, way more of that town is under historic preservation than our town. That's number one. And secondly, when that whole mansionization thing was the big issue, when the town of Chevy Chase changed their laws, the the same kind of advocacy was not going on in Somerset. We would have had that opportunity, but but it wasn't really a big issue here. It was a big issue in Chevy Chase. They, it was, it was a political issue. It it was affected. Who got to serve on the council and all that? And then they and they changed it, but it just wasn't. There was no advocacy for that in Somerset at that time. But that's not to say, but maybe in hindsight, we should have adopted all that back then. But anyway, this is what I wanted to add.
Sure, I can give you more examples, or I can just, I can just send you council members a table that I prepared. Comparing restrictions.
That'd be great, Ron. Please do. Thank you for some of that background, Mr. Mayor. So I I'm hearing pretty much a general consensus that the town should seriously explore and or impose some some additional or new building code revisions to address things like size, mass, height. But we're not quite ready to do so. One interesting possibility the mayor just mentioned is designation, historic designation for the town. And I think we can certainly do some exploration in that area. Getting back to this first bucket, my concern about the the paragraph, subparagraphs ENF and changing those in this first bucket is that the other items we're changing in the first bucket are like administrative corrections to just incorporate what we do, incorporate language that we impose in in building permits such as wall permits or wall checks. My personal preference would be to, for the time being, remove changes to ENF. Maybe make that a fourth bucket, but at least at least for one, one more iteration or cycle of building code revisions. Wait until we have something in that addresses some aspects of enjoyment before we look at removing or changing ENF. Yeah, so just to go around again, Robin, I see you popped up. Do you have any further thoughts, comments?
Right, yeah. Actually, I I would like to remove E soon. The reason being that it puts a fire under us at that point to improve our building code. And if we leave it in the indeterminate future, we'll keep pushing it further as we continue to revise your building code. So get it done now. That puts a fire under us to improve our building code.
But that also leaves, it conveys, I'm concerned, it conveys the impression to the town that that's not of particular importance to this.
What I mean, what it's what we're understanding and what I'm reading from our our attorney is that that clause is not consistent with the powers we've been delegated from the state. And also that it is in violation of court rulings where we are showing in that differential advantage to particular neighbors. So I think because of that, we have to take out the clause, and we can explain that to the residents that it is one that is in violation of the authorities we've been given.
Okay, I see your saying. Um, thank you, Robin. Shannon, before we move on to the other bucket, any other comments, thoughts?
Um, no, I mean, I disagree with what Robin said. I think we should leave that part in until we figure out what the, you know, what implications are that we want to adjust into our code. Um, and we, but we should move it all along quickly. I don't think there's anything, you know, why should we get neighbors all up in arms about removing it and trying to explain to them? It's because it doesn't go under the law anyway, or, you know, and going back and forth within versus just trying to do it all as once.
Okay, thank you. Debbie?
I agree. I I think we should, I don't know why we just can't barrel ahead and do what needs to be done. You know, change the code. We, I think we all have a sense of what it needs to be. We have a very able attorney who can write this for us, right?
Doubling his fee as as you say that, realize.
Oh, that's that's cost what it costs, you know. Um, but I think we just need to just do it. Stop dragging our feet before we get 10 more houses that are, you know, screaming at us as we, you know, walk out our doors. I just let's do it.
And I've I've been impressed by this council's ability to come together and and really start to advance the code, make changes to the code and protect the town's character in residence so a little bit better. If I had a chance, did Kabir?
Yes, Kabir is here.
Great, Kabir, do you have any comments, thoughts, questions?
Yeah, I'm, you know, obviously in favor of not postponing, improving the code. I think removing that language improves the code. I think it's consistent with the advice we've received from our lawyer. As I think you read at the top of this meeting, I'm sorry, I was a few minutes late. The one very minor proposal I made as a starting point, I don't know if others have made better proposals, I suspect people have. And it would be good to to kind of take those into consideration because it will strengthen our code right now, not a month from now. We will be strengthening it by removing vague language that's dogged us for a while. I think the, in terms of the other code changes that have come up, you know, we've I I have been drawn to this idea of ratio that Ron brought up. I think both Robin and Steve, I think we have discussed this in the past. I've also been drawn to the idea of high restrictions. I think this, we have to pursue these. I think some of these we might not need to wait for more research and evidence gathering to kind of make it happen. But in some cases, we may need to. But these two, given that there's some, I think even DC has a ratio, I remember Robin telling me. Oh, there's some green surface ratio. I think there's some evidence out there on how these restrictions have worked out that we could take into consideration. And lastly, I think, I think we should really take Mayor Slaven's suggestion very seriously on historic district. There are many, many cascading. There's, it's a net benefit to our town, let me put it that way, to think about that from a broader development perspective. I think it will be surprisingly beneficial to us when, once we dig into it, to think through what that what that means. Let alone preserving some beautiful mid-century modern homes as they are. So I, so one, I recommend we improve the code today. Removing this language improves the code. It's inconsistent with the advice we receive from our, from our. It's inconsistent with the advice we receive from our, from our legal counsel, who's guided us well all this time. And I've made one suggestion, I hope there can be others, but we should improve it, not postpone improving it. Two, I think we can make other changes to strengthen the code, to make it less vague, more guided along the lines of things like ratio, height restrictions, and some of those might be easier to implement now. And then lastly, I think Mayor's suggestion on historic district extending that, we should look at that seriously. There might be other cascading benefits of that down the road.
Great, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you for your comment, Kabir. Regret that you weren't able to join us during the beginning because I led off by sharing your proposal. And we discussed it, but unfortunately, Ron explained that he found some of the language problematic, so.
Okay.
Not to not pass the Ron check, I liked.
That's good. No, 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 I'm glad, I'm glad. It was, it was just to be a trigger to get us to the right point, you know, obviously. And and with the expectation others would have suggestions and we could build on it today or or at some point.
I if can I, is it okay if I jump in quickly?
Yes, please. Yes.
I was, I, so one, one thing I would just worry about a little bit is that if we're holding applicants to standards that we don't yet have adopted in our code, that that opens us up to capricious decisions on permits. And I also there be clear that there's a difference between a a regular permit application versus a variance application, which does look at things a bit more holistically and whether it has an undue impact on neighboring properties, et cetera. I I thought perhaps one way that we could keep the spirit of of making sure that building doesn't adversely affect neighboring properties, but making clear that regular permits are judged by substantive criteria. And Ron, I hadn't really had a chance to talk to you about it in detail, but if we change the language to something like the proposed work would not affect neighbors' enjoyment of property or whatever the current language is as defined by sections A through D and our stormwater ordinance and our tree ordinance, so that we make clear that the substantive criteria we put in place and continue to put in place moving forward is how we are protecting these things.
Matt, what would be, I don't, I don't know about Steve, but just a quick reaction to that. What would be the suggested language then?
Uh, let me pull.
Is this a Ron endorsed language?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, so we'll have live, live Ron review.
I I I understand Matt's proposal and it's similar to what you find in the town of Chevy Chase, Chevy Chase Village codes where the building regulations are preceded by a preamble, a intents and purposes provision. These building regulations are adopted in order to protect the public health, safety and welfare, to prevent stream channel erosion, to preserve property values and the enjoyment of the residents. And then there's substantive criteria below that that accomplishes those intents and purposes. So I think that's similar to what Matt is saying. But, you know, I I just think that there's really no quick fix other than to do a comprehensive review and decide what substantive building regulations you want to put in. I mean, I, yeah, so.
I see.
You know, a quick word on that too. So it's, you know, it it could be you adopt regulations from other towns as your own, but what Chevy Chase Village, Town Chevy Chase and Martin's additions did was hire an urban planner and or architect, which performs a character study of your town and says, here's the character of your town in substantive language, and here's how you protect it. So for example, Martin's additions found that they have a specific character element of large backyards. So they came up with a special secondary setback requirement. If a house is located so so far from the front building restriction line, the house has to be set in a little more to preserve open spaces in the rear yard, to preserve that character. But you know, you don't necessarily have to go through that, but it can be helpful because let's say we want to impose a height requirement. It would be good to know what the average height is in the town.
Yes. But by by a credited third-party expert rather than me going around my bike and eyeballing it. You know, I I think that the preamble, just to, just, I really like that idea. I don't know what others think, but I like that idea a lot because it's just, again, systematic data-driven, not based on our personal opinions and preferences and proclivities. And which is, you know, partly our duty to sort of drive things in a substantive manner. But I wanted to just focus a bit on the previous comment you made about the preamble because Steve, I think that's similar to an idea you had, which might be another way we we evolve from today as a baby step, not the full substantive changes we want to see, but still some level of strengthening. Sounds like Matt is suggesting something similar. I don't know if we want to kind of understand that in our group, what that, what that means. This is that we would have some preamble to the code where we state our intent, which might address some of the kind of what is captured in this enjoyment clause. Is that, is that what we are saying?
Well, it sounds like that, that the other, you know, Chevy Chase Village or whatever actually does have like the enjoyment part in their clause. They just provide, so they didn't take it out, they left it in. They just provided substantial criteria underneath that.
Yeah. But they put it in the preamble. Right, that's what I'm getting at, is that maybe we we need to elevate this into the preamble. So it's it's overarching and it's, and I think that's what Matt is perhaps suggesting as well. Maybe that's, that's a good evolution from where we are now. It's sort of the overarching intent and then subject to this substantive criteria.
Yeah, I mean, I like the preamble idea too. Although writing a preamble we all agree on is not as implementer, I will say that. But yes, I like the preamble.
Like anything, let's not make perfect the enemy of the good. You know, if we can take the step in the right direction with the language we sort of have, that we all generally feel good about, let's move it forward. Ron, what do you think? You're quiet, you look uncomfortable.
Oh, no, sorry, I was just trying to find Chevy Chases so I could share that with you. It says, section four, three, purposes. To maintain privacy and space between properties, ensure adequate air and light, and maintain safe passageways between buildings. And minimize the flow of stormwater from lots by encouraging the maintenance of open spaces and tree canopy and reduced building and surface coverage. To protect the town's distinct character by encouraging the retention and maintenance of open space and shade trees on residential lots and the preservation of existing houses and accessory structures. To encourage the construction of additions to existing houses and new houses that are compatible with existing houses in terms of height, scale, massing and arrangement. So that's the, the preamble in the town Chevy Chase code.
So it it's sort of summarizing the intent of the code.
Right, and then, and then they accomplish it with maximum height, maximum floor area, wall plane length, maximum non-vegetative surface area setbacks. Accessory building requirements, front-loading garage requirements. You know, they've found that if you have a below-grade front-loading garage, when you're looking at the house from the street, it can make the house look like it's four stories, make it bigger than it seems. So they restrict the size that the front-loading garage can be, which sort of encourages garages to instead be moved around the side of the building, which preserves character. And they have, there's, I don't need to go through them all.
So one specific question in front of us is, just to be very specific, is that we remove E, is it E? E, remove E and then, and at the same time, add a preamble statement that encapsulates our suggestion. That's suggestion number one we have. Suggestion number two we have is that we remove E and F with new language, although I don't think we have any language. And I think Ron's point is might be hard to come up with.
I think the proposal is to remove E only, actually, Kabir.
Ron, and then there's the third, which is Ron's proposal, just remove E and we move forward, so.
And 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 Kabir's recommendation too, to combine E and F into one statement. You know, I I think might be a good interim step, but my point was it might still leave us with the, you know, the problem of residents wanting to use that provision to argue that their enjoyment is impacted and it's a health issue or, you know, a public safe, public self, health and safety issue. And you might be in the same place we're in now.
Well, I accept, I don't know if this, maybe you brought this up earlier, but what I, what I, how I would respond to that is that to demonstrate that is a higher threshold and and it is, it is more likely to be more specifically demonstrated. I think the problem with enjoyment is that it is a low threshold and it can be anything. I think this raises the threshold and it can be demonstrated. There is a public health impact, we want to know. And if it can be demonstrated, that's a good thing, you know, and it will, it will inform us. I think it will eliminate a lot of like just random personal preferences and discomfort and focusing on a few very narrow, specific things. That was my logic there to suggest that. So again, you know, perfect, not not make the perfect the enemy of the good. It improves things from where they are now, even if it doesn't fully eliminate people abusing that, which could happen, but at least it improves.
Great discussion. I'd just like to, for everyone's awareness, or we're just as we're talking about a preamble, we effectively have a preamble in our code. Section 112 dash one, purpose of our building code talks about is the purpose of this part, to ensure public safety, health and welfare as far as they're affected by building construction, to ensure the safety to life and property from all hazards incident to the design direction, et cetera, et cetera. So we might actually be in pretty good shape with a preamble.
Public health and welfare is in the preamble, that phrase.
Yes. Public safety, health and welfare are in the preamble of the purpose which correlates to the preamble, I guess, in other town codes. And while I hear some differences of opinion as to whether or not now is the time to remove E and F, I I do hear a pretty common, strong agreement that this council should aggressively move forward to consider further building code revisions to to actually define and protect the culture of the town, the character of the town. And I like the idea of bringing in a professional third-party vendor, maybe. So I'll I'll talk with the mayor and the manager after this, after this meeting sometime to see how we might be able to proceed with a proposal to the council in that regard. Okay, I thank you. I just, I note that we're at 12:44 and I wanted to focus on the third bucket, which is sort of the stormwater code bucket. We've talked about it a fair bit at the council meeting. My sense is that it's as you as you indicated, Kabir, it it might not be perfect, but it's, it's pretty darn good. And I'm ready to support. I know that the Stormwater Study Committee has spent a lot of time pulling some of these together. But with that as as an intro, I just hope we have a little discussion, little further discussion. Robin?
Right, it's more just if if people have further questions about it, you know, I can help answer it. Great, let's talk.
That's good. So we'll see, does Shannon, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, Debbie?
No, I don't, thank you.
Wow, this could be super fast all of a sudden. Kabir?
Yes, I have the same questions that that our staff has and our lawyer has, as they commented in in the draft. There were maybe five to eight questions there, which we didn't address, is my understanding. And that's why I suggested we we do another cycle around this. So I don't know if you guys, I have the questions in front of me. You know, I don't know if these have already been somehow independently addressed. At least I'm not privy, privy to that. But there was, under the environmental site design, there was a question. This definition comes from the MDE model. These examples come from the design manual. Are the examples consistent with what is meant as onsite infiltration?
Yeah, so the purpose of that question there was just to make sure the council agrees that how we've described environmental site design practices and structural practices as consistent with the intent, because we are making one change to the design manual in saying that the dry wells are going to be deemed structural rather than ESD. And so, you know, just wanted to make sure there's nothing else on that list that we should similarly.
I think that's it, Robin, that that's it, correct, Robin?
Right, yes, right. And I mean, some of the reasons why dry water level two rather than level one are, first of all, they they aren't a surface, surface thing, but more importantly, every building application that's come through to us has proposed dry wells and when it's been possible for them to be put in. Yet the range of options in environmental site design are many. And so why is it that dry wells have always been proposed? And the answer, it turns out, is they're cheaper. In other words, for a developer to put in a dry well, they've got to dig a hole and put in the dry well. And that's it. Whereas for rain garden or conservation landscaping, they've got to bring in the landscape or which costs money and design the landscape which costs money. So there's a clear incentive for the developers to go for the easiest solution among these, which is dry wells and put them in. So we put brakes on the dry well in our code. We're saying at least consider these options first before you consider dry wells. That's the point of it.
Right. Just as, because there are some issues with dry wells, you know, they they can over flood, they they have to be maintained.
They they're high maintenance, they are that, yes.
They can get clogged, the the sediment build up. Yeah.
And that's what we'll have in our code, that if you have a dry well, it has to be maintained, but
Right.
But we don't really have an enforcement mechanism in the town.
And rain gardens are actually easier to maintain than dry wells, but they're more expensive to put in, it's true.
But they are all subject to subsidy.
And you can get a subsidy.
Could we stipulate that there has to be a mixture of of, you know, procedures like, you know, you have a dry well and you have a rain garden. You can't just have like one thing.
It was, no, we don't say that you have to have a mixture, but it implies you may need a mixture in order to satisfy the requirement. So in other words, if you can do it with one thing, great. But if you can't, then you're going to have to have a mixture.
Now, on this part, the other thing that I wasn't clear on is that do do people understand the difference between non-structural, structural, small-scale? There's the words that we are using, are these universally understood? Or do we need to define those as well?
You always need to define them, I think.
Yeah, I mean, they are, they are.
Firstly, I didn't, I, the structural, non-structural, it took me a few sort of re-reads to fully understand. Well, on scale, I guess we can all interpret what that means.
Yeah, well, I I will confess that I still don't understand how the state could define dry wells as non-structural. And I I'm still on a loop on that, I just don't get it. I now have a contact of the state that I can actually ask them how they came up with.
Well, you're basically saying more the reason that we define these clearly.
Yeah, no, I mean, right, and they, Ron carefully wrote the code, so they are defined in in the first section and we, because they say that, yeah.
And so the definition of E S D incorporates by reference the design manual. Except then we specify a change we're making to the design manual. If that that helps, but yeah, I'm I'm in favor of adding definitions if it makes it better.
Also, clarifying that our runoff volume calculations are done the same as the. E S D process and computations manual from the state of Maryland.
Yes, they are, except that what I'm suggesting, although this is for the council also, is that we don't use the. Lesser volumes for the poorer quality soil. We stay with the top quality soil calculation only. And I went into that actually at the council meeting. The reason for that is a number of the mitigation measures do not depend upon the soil at all. And also the fact of the matter is that. The soil is deteriorated after the builders operate on it, so it's kind of a. Giving in to the builders if we give them a. Let off for poor soil. They've created the poor soil.
But the but the calculations for the structures also is done based on the soil composition.
Well. You assume the soil composition is the a soil for the calculations. That's what it boils down.
Even for the even for the the the. The potential issue with that is that you are, you're giving credit for a dry well when it might not hurt, for example.
No, 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 no. The soil as it is. Physically on the ground determines whether you can put in a dry well. Okay. And or a rain garden. In fact, it's pretty much you need the same kind of soil for both. But the calculation itself for how much volume. That they capture with whatever devices they're using assumes a top quality soil. So that they're separate.
I'm I'm struggling with that. I I want to add one more. That do we need to mention the design manual at all?
We should, yeah, the the. The state is the authority for us, so we should refer to the state.
Does state have a reference?
But be because we are defining what we want. Why do, why does it matter what's in the design manual?
Our authority comes from the state and so.
That that is given, but design manual is, you know, it's not the authority. It's specifying. The universe of interventions.
Right, well.
We are specifying our own universe of interventions and our own definitions.
It's the state law from two thousand and seven, which specified environmental site design. And we have to follow the state law. It's that simple. And, you know, the state manual is the guidance for following that law.
There, so Kabir, there's a, this is a forty-three page document on how to how to do the computation. So the benefit is to say. Please reference this document instead of adding forty-three pages to our own.
Yes, except in one instance. Right? We are saying something different, Ron.
Well, for for this purpose, for what what Matt is saying, no, we're not. It it's that that is how to compute how much water they have to capture for a particular house.
We follow.
Yeah, our difference is in how we classify the kinds of mitigation measure they may use to capture it.
So in that instance, do we need to mention the design manual? In this latter instance, I'm just only saying, I'm looking at this from someone who's going to do this work, is looking at the code. Wants to figure out what they're going to do with their house. It needs to be understandable to them. And it needs to be up, you know, they, we want them to apply it. And so, and I'm also trying to reduce the burden on our staff to be always interpreting. And so the code needs to stand on its own, and that's the lens I'm coming at at this and. You know, if there's confusion and language is weak, we will have challenges with implementing.
Where do you see, where do you see a problem?
Well, the one example, something Ron said stood out to me, this idea that we are saying design manual except in one instance. So I'm wondering, is there a more elegant way of doing that? When that instance, we don't mention the design value, number one. This definition of what is structural and non structural, I can tell you, most people will be confused by that unless they are. You know. Getting the best guidance they can get. So we need to be able to be able to define that, I think, clearly. Things like that.
Have you looked at the code that that that? Ron wrote for us there where he gives illustrations of what's structural and what's non structural in that code. So like dry wells and rain barrels are structural by our definition. Rain garden, conservation, landscaping, et cetera, of a surface and non structural.
I'm just saying, in this particular update, do we need to? Reference that or?
Well, that's in the, this is, this is the new code that we're putting in, that 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 is in that new code. I remember, Ron, I'm not making this up, right? It's there, yes.
I'm looking at just the bucket three. Do we we define structural?
We.
Don't define struc- well, we we define it with example, with a list of examples.
Okay, maybe it's a language thing. Maybe we can be very clear what structural, like this is examples of structural.
Right. I don't, I I honestly don't think that any builder would have difficulty in understanding or accepting that a dry well is a structural feature, you know.
Okay. Then there was a question. I I know we have three minutes, but this is why I wanted this meeting, this hour, because I think this is pretty major stuff. The. There's another question here. This is a question from Doug. Doug questions whether decks and or pools should be included.
Yeah, in the definition of impervious.
In the definition of impervious services.
They are impervious. I mean, they could be included.
Although I will tell you that. People have like weird things about pools, like there's some weird thing where. They didn't count on Montgomery County as impervious and I I don't know. There's something weird with pools.
Pools are not seen as impervious. By some county definition.
The thought is rainwater can just go into the pool.
I see.
Something I I don't.
It's a catchment. It's not a traditional, it it has, it serves a catchment purpose.
Like, I don't know. I don't understand it, but there's, it didn't count as. I don't, I I'm not sure. There was something.
I think it's a catchment because it can catch. So do we need to? Are we veering away from that line of thinking? To to kind of define it with of the substance and not the catchment value?
On pools. They hold a certain amount of water, which is usually in them in the season. And if more water goes in them, then it has to come out, you know, that is, there's no further capacity to calculate them. But I don't wish to argue the case particularly, so if we want to leave out pools and just include decks, decks certainly are impervious. That that's okay by me.
Yeah, I mean, you can leave in the pool. I'm just telling you, there was like a weird, there was a weird thing with pools.
In. Before I have to go. I think some of these issues will end up addressing as variance requests. Or will identify as gaps in the in this code revision as we move forward, and then we can make some. Minor modifications based on lessons learned. But. To move ahead.
Yeah, what I would request is that these, the whole range of these questions, we should address them. You know, at least I would be more comfortable if they address. We don't need to do it today. They could be done by email. I think we all have them. I request, Ron, maybe you just recirculate bucket three with those questions.
Sure, I can do that.
And I can, I can be the pest that keeps emailing.
Thank you for the focus, Kabir. Okay.
It's pretty substantive. All right.
Yeah, and most importantly, among those comments, I would recommend that we have a. Stormwater drainage engineer review the code for feasibility and help us confirm that we have a calculation methodology that. Town staff can apply.
Right, and I think I agree with you when when we had that discussion, yes.
And and right now, we don't have a view on that.
I think Doug 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 is with, I think Doug's been talking with somebody to check on. Calculations and making sure it works. Part of it is, you know, what? What we really think is realistic or. And what is the maximum extent practicable? Yeah, I was, I was doing some calculations yesterday after talking with Doug on. On a house that was, if I think I did like thirty-five hundred square foot total. Project on a nine thousand square foot. Property, if it was a new build. And it would require about six hundred and seven cubic feet of water. And the permeable driveway would take care of about a hundred and forty-five of those. So that leaves, you know, four hundred and sixty-three cubic feet. And I know dry wells are not not the preferred method, but say there was a three hundred foot pat, a three hundred square foot patio. So we put in a three hundred square foot rain garden. That would only be ninety cubic feet of water. So you would need. Seven rain gardens, three hundred square feet. So I I I don't know if that's realistic or not.
Well, what, they, I mean, obviously, there's a third level rain tanks as well, but the the. Point is they'd have to seek variances from us, and that's where the action is.
Right. I I, yeah, I guess my more is that. We might, we might get a variance on every single building permit.
I was gonna ask a question. Is your sense, is this a genuine sense or fear? I don't know, but is there is there a sense that we will get? You know, a lot of homes will be along similar lines.
Yeah, I do.
So can you give us guidance, recommendation, request, something that guides us on how we can make it so that it is easier? For you to implement this, so that we don't get to the variance point, because I don't think it's good enough to say we will just deal it in variance. I still have to deal with.
I I mean, I think that we should write the code as we think the code should be. And if we learn from experience that it's too tough on them and they just can't do it, then we modify the code. That's fine.
Are we willing to do that? Because I I've been.
On the possibility that everybody's.
That requires time. That requires multiple hearings and absorbing the data, and, you know, we've not been patient that way. You know, because it requires time.
It it, well, I I feel that we've been doing this a long time already, actually.
Not since we've changed.
We can do it a bit longer if if you're not comfortable. That's that's fine.
No, changing the code, we've been talking about her. And lots of papers and all that, but changing the code just happened, you know, less than a year ago. So that's, my view is. You know, we get impatient and then it's hard to change things. We want to go on to the next code tightening. So if we can get it, at least this seems like a pretty important pillar to get right is the calculation.
Well, in Matt's example, I mean, I don't, I don't think they can do it without dry wells, right?
But a dry, but a dry well would, I I think I did the math and it would take nineteen dry wells. So it's it's the same. It's and and it goes back to your point, which you brought it before, that the dry wells are really a water quality. Structure that are meant to take the first flush of water, so that has the pollutants, so it holds that. And then the rest just runs off, like you said, it's not really a water quantity structure. The way that we want, we want it to be, the way that we're thinking about stormwater and flooding.
As in, it's not, it has less storage.
Well, it's, you know.
It doesn't drain.
Two point six inches, and the idea is that first two point six inches is based on roof coverage. Because that's where there's contaminants and oils and things like that, that we don't want to go into the creek and into the bay. So it it, that first flush washes off and goes into the dry wells. And it holds that and lets that slowly dissipate. Whereas the rest is just rainwater that flows off, and that's what Shannon sees in her yard, things like that.
Yeah, again, just to be clear, dry wells do drain. They they drain slowly, yes, but they do drain.
Yeah, so over.
That is different from rain train, rain tanks, which have to be pumped out.
Right.
Can we, can we give ourselves another R just for, so we don't do E F and all the other buckets, we can just focus on this piece? Again, because I do think it's a.
I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think part of the problem is, is that. These are all kind of hypothetical, like, like the, you know, it doesn't, there's no, there's no real like answer. And so if you were to go and ask ten different civil engineers what you should do on various projects, they're going to have different. Answers, because they can't just say, oh, if you do X, this is what the result will be. And so it's just, you know, it's basically how do you combine like all of the, you know, if we provide people with, these are the ways that you can limit your, your runoff and your quality of water. X, Y, Z, da, da, da. Each one has its own little calculations and can take up that water. Whether or not it truly works, we don't really know, but. I I think that that's where you're looking for kind of an answer that's not there, if that makes sense.
Okay, well, let's let, have that be the last word for today.
Can I say one thing? Sorry, Jeffrey, I I I it, I don't want it to be solved, but I also don't want to introduce something that will be hard to, impossible to implement.
Okay.
Knowing, knowingly, that's it. And if we have a way that we can kind of minimize that. That's all I'm looking for, and right now I don't have that clear confidence.
Okay, well, we will, so in one hour, the president and I are going to be setting the agenda for the work session, and we will. Have a continuation of this discussion as part of the work session.
Yeah, remember, I won't be here for the October work session.
Right, but we will can, we will put a pin in this and we will continue it.
Wait, sorry, Robin, since you won't be here, would you have a moment?
Okay.
Ron's questions and respond to them in an email to all of us.
Or to Ron. Let's, let's.
Sure.
Put a pin in that. Okay. Go ahead.
No, I I finished. I was talking first, just to be clear. I was just saying, Robin, if you can take a moment to respond to those questions the staff has to that bucket three. You know, that would be helpful to us.
And he'll circulate his response.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, everybody. Thanks a lot. See you next Monday at five thirty in person at the town hall.
Bye, everybody.
Bye. Take care.